We'll go ahead and call this meeting for July 21st order. At this time, I would ask Mr. Jimmy Turner of Calvary Baptist Church if he would come and give us an invocation.
May we pray. Dear Holy Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet here together as a group. Please be with the ones that are on this board, and please be with Dr. Fisher. I would just like to lift up David Fisher, Walker Spurling, Danny Blanton, Ron Humphreys, Joel Shores, Aaron Bridges, Ronnie Grigg, Gloria Sherman, and Kenneth Ledford up to you. Please give them the courage, the wisdom, and the strength needed to conduct the business that is performed tonight. And please thank you for giving them the opportunity to put the staff, the educators, and the children of Cleveland County first. I'm in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Spurling if you would lead us in our pledge.
Please stand. Salute pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Before we have special recognition, I understand Mr. Blanton is zooming in. Mr. Blanton, are you able to hear me? He is not connected, because he tried to connect.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know when he called me, he was having trouble with his truck getting to the vacation spot, so he might not have been there.
If you would just, if he tries to call in or something, you'll flag me down or whatever, get my attention somehow, and we'll go from there. But at this time, we'll go ahead and go ahead with our special recognition. I'll call on Mr. David Pless.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Fisher, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight on a great topic. The Coach Jim Taylor Award is named in honor of Coach Taylor. Coach Taylor served as the head football coach and athletic director at Shelby High School and was also our first county athletic director. During his time in athletics, Coach Taylor was extremely successful in terms of wins and championships, but he was also successful in teaching student athletes the importance of performing in the classroom. Coach Taylor couldn't be with us tonight, but he does send his regards. Out of our four traditional high schools, we average the unweighted GPA for all varsity athletes, and the highest of the four wins Coach Taylor's award. I am super proud of all of our schools. Each school had a great, very high GPA. All four of our schools had over a 3.3 average. I think playing ball and making it in the classroom and having a B-plus average, that's pretty good. But this year's winner of the Coach Jim Taylor Award is Crest High School, and Athletic Director Jeff Milton is here to accept the award.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I hear Mr. Humphreys and second by Mr. Grigg. All those in favor? That is eight to zero. All right. Next is the approval of the minutes. With no objection, we'll take all the minutes at one. I heard Mr. Bridges. Mr. Humphreys is the second. All in favor of approving the minutes? That will be eight to zero. All right. At this time, the Touchdown Club, Dr. Fisher, are you going to do a presentation on that?
Dear Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would like to recognize Mr. John Herndon. Mr. Herndon is here tonight. Mr. Herndon is a general contractor that is working with Mr. David Brinkley and the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club. Unfortunately, Mr. Brinkley could not be here tonight. He's dealing with a few issues. He had really hoped to be here. I talked with Mr. Brinkley a couple of times yesterday, text back and forth, and then I spoke with him this morning, and unfortunately, through some issues out of his control, he's unable to be here with us tonight. So I told him I'd present this information to you. It's been presented to two committees, and I think through conversations, everybody's fairly aware of the proposal that's going on. You've got a memo kind of handout here at your spots with a couple of documents, but I'll just kind of go over that and then try to answer any questions the board may have. Originally, we wrote a proposal, a SCIF grant that was awarded in 2021. That SCIF grant included CLB High School Fieldhouse, press boxes, concession stands, restroom facilities for Burns High School and Crest High School, and a press box for Kings Mountain High School. We also included in that SCIF grant some write-in for stadium lighting and track improvements as budget allowed. As you can imagine, what happened since 2021, cost of construction, everything has skyrocketed, so we've been unable to do those things. We do have a couple of schools that we did, were able to do some stadium lighting in consultation with and in cooperation with the American Legion World Series. However, as you see bullet two, the Shelby High School Fieldhouse, the Burns High School and Crest High School press box projects are complete. The Kings Mountain High School project is still undone when we look about their press box. So the proposal that Mr. Blanton, or excuse me, that Mr. Brinkley proposed to the Operations Committee and that we also spoke about in the Finance Personnel Committee is the proposal to partner with the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club to build the new press box that also involves a stadium renovation, including, and there's a list of things that that would include, that the Touchdown Club is going to provide new bleachers, replacing the old wood-based bleachers. Those are in need of repair, bringing bleachers up to ADA code, adding seating to the side of the current home bleachers, as well as stadium-style seats connected to the press box. You can see that in the pictures that you've got there at your spots. Fastly improving handicap accessibility inside the stadium and in parking. One of the things that Mr. Brinkley said this morning that he wanted to make sure that we highlighted to you was that the, improving the handicap accessibility there inside the stadium and in the parking lot. Mr. Brinkley also intends to build a wrestling building to be constructed in between the pool and tennis facility on that campus. The estimated total project of all of that is in excess of $4 million. So you may add, what's Cleveland County Schools' commitment? Where are we from a commitment standpoint from our end? Well, our partnership with the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club on the project and permitting the Touchdown Club to move forward with campus enhancements, as your policy says, anyone that substantially improves the campus needs to have board approval. So that's part of the proposal. Also is the $1.1 million as outlined in the original SCIF budget that would be paid as work completed with proper documentation. Again, we'll work with the general contractor to make sure that proper documentation is done. We had budgeted $1.1 in our initial SCIF budget. And then additional $750,000 that Mr. Brinkley and the Touchdown Club has requested to be paid back over multiple years. And that is something that is in addition to what we had budgeted in some of our other projects. They've been a little more expensive than what we had hoped for in the original budget with the increased cost of doing business in terms of the construction business. So that is the request to take the $1.1 that we had originally budgeted out of SCIF, add $750,000 of it, which would need to be paid over a couple of years, not all at one time to ease the financial issue for us. So the recommendation and the request from Mr. Brinkley is to partner, for Cleveland County Schools, to partner with the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club to not only build the press box there at Kings Mountain High School in the stadium, but also to do those other stadium improvements that you see listed in the pictures there and were presented to committees. So, Mr. Chairman, that's just a summary of a more detailed, lengthy presentation to both committees, because I tried to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. Herndon is available for any questions as far as the construction. One question that may come up is, when does this process start? It would start immediately after football season. The football season this year ended, and, you know, in conversations with Mr. Herndon and Mr. Brinkley, I have been, made it abundantly clear that all the construction in the lower bowl area with the stadium would need to be completed prior to Kings Mountain High School's graduation. There would probably still be some construction ongoing in the upper seating and in the press box area. That may not be finished. Hopefully, it would. Hopefully, Mr. Herndon, things go well, and they're able to, if approved, they're able to get all of that done prior to graduation. But we must have that lower bowl of seating for graduation so that we can accommodate the class of 2026. Obviously, just like what happened with Burns and Crest, when we built the press box and concession stands and restrooms on that campus, seating for soccer will be impacted. So we'll have to use the visitor's side for all the fan seating during the soccer season and track season there at the high school. So, Mr. Chairman, we've got to try and answer any of the questions. This would need a motion in a second. It was presented to committees, but we felt like the scope of this needed to come to the full board.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Not really a question, but I would like to point out, it was brought in front of the Operations Committee. The Operations Committee did basically approve in committee the concept and the project, and we punted it, if you will, to finance, because we don't want to tell finance what we can and can't spend. So it did come out of, the project itself came out of committee as approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spurling.
I'd also like to make a comment. For the Finance Committee, we also had the conversation. From what I gathered, I mean, I don't think anything's changed today, but I think all the board members were on deck for that as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Anybody else? Well, that'd be nice, wouldn't it? Mr. Fisher, Dr. Fisher, I don't want to repeat everything you just said, but I feel like I want to try to say this in layman's terms for those who watch this, or can, I can refer them back to it, to the folks that are watching. We have $1.1 million that was given us to the, by the state, to do repairs for the press box at Kings Mountain High School. So, Mr. Herndon is here tonight, and he came to our committee, and if I'm wrong with this, Mr. Herndon, please correct me, but you stated, I believe, there was no way we could build a press box for $1.8 million in today's economy. Is that correct?
$1.1.
$1.1. It would cost us about $1.8, and then we would still be out of ADA compliance. Am I correct? Okay. So we're out of ADA compliance. We're going to have to fix that. We're going to have to build the press box. In other words, what I'm saying to the community is, we're really getting a break here, because we've got to spend the $1.1, and the $700,000 we get to give back to the Touchdown Club in four payments over four years. It ain't like a lump sum of $700,000. Because a lot of people are going to say, well, what are you doing spending all this money on a athletic project? Well, it was grants that we have to spend, so I just felt like I wanted the community to know, to hear it from my mouth, because I had some problems with it first, but till I realized, we're probably going to save a lot of money by doing it this way. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me, I know what you meant. Let me make sure to clarify that when we got the SCIF grant of $4.9 million, we allocated money to each school.
Right.
So we have already spent well over what the SCIF entitled us to do, because the projects at Burns and Crest were $2 million each. The problem, the project at Shelby was like $1.6. So in terms of that SCIF money, that SCIF money has already all been expended, but we've committed, the commitment was in the grant we wrote to do these projects. So we kind of committed to the project. Now, I wanted to, you know, and I know that's what you're saying, the actual dollars, we would obviously spend the SCIF dollars first to get those federal dollars out, so it's-
In layman's terms, can I say it this way? Inflation caught us?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
I just want to make sure that for the public that-
Right, that's what I'm, that's why I'm saying all this, is for the public, because I know, you know, we get a lot of blowback sometimes on things, but when you, when you add it up, I really feel like we're going to save several hundred thousand dollars by doing it this way.
Absolutely, and we're going to get a lot more product. I will also say, and I'm going to use round numbers with our SCIF grant, we got $4.9 million. Now, all totaled, when we do this, we'll spend about $7 million, but we've, we got almost $5 million, and we spent two, two and a half of our own money to get five. I think all of us would do that in projects that are desperately needed from at Burns and Crest, press box restrooms, and the safety of those concessions and the safety of their press box and the safety of the press box at Kings Mountain. Those are safety issues. They are ADA and compliance issues as well. So you're exactly right. We are, by partnering with people, we're able to get more and enhance some things that we may not be able to do.
I just wanted to be transparent about all this. Yep. Yes.
Another safety issue that I want to bring up is that Kings Mountain, those bleachers were all wood. They're not, they're not plastic, aluminum, like we got with these scoops, they're wood.
They are wood, they are wood bleachers. They do have a metal covering over that, but the base, the structure of those bleachers are wooden structures, so you're exactly right.
But part of this project is to replace those.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And we would not be able to do that. If we were doing the press box on our own, we would not be able to replace that. So we still have that compliance issue.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, of course. There was a comment made, and just for the sake of public clarity, we're not currently out of ADA compliance. We have a safe harbor at the moment, but once construction begins, we would be-
Right. Okay. Thank you for, yeah, let's get sure we get everything clarified to the public that once the construction began, we would be out of ADA compliant. Okay? So I just want to make sure, I just felt like I really needed to say all this, so. All right, I will be quiet now.
Oh, you're good.
Mr. Bridges makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spurling. Any other discussion? All those in favor? That's eight to zero. Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
Thank you.
Next will be the Finance and Personnel Report. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The June 16th Finance and Personnel Committee meeting was called to order by Chairman Aaron Bridges. Dr. Stephen Fisher shared a proposal from the Kings Mountain High School Touchdown Club for press box construction and stadium renovation. This proposal was originally presented to the Safety and Operations Committee in June 2025 by Touchdown Club President David Brinkley. As part of the proposal, Mr. Brinkley requested that the board allocate an additional $750,000 for this project above the $1.1 million already agreed to for the Kings Mountain High School press box project as part of the state SCIF grant, SCIF grant, excuse me. The total project cost is estimated to be $4 million. Mr. Brinkley has promised that the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club would pay for any cost above the $1.8 requested if approved. In addition, the Touchdown Club plans to do a wrestling room at no construction cost to the district. If approved, the $750,000 will be paid over three to four years, and will come from long-term capital funds. The committee unanimously supported the project. This project will come to the full board for recommendation and approval at tonight's meeting. Rob McDaniel shared a state budget update. We still do not have a budget, but when we have been given, but we have been given proposed budget allotments. We are hopeful for an increase in our allotment once a budget is approved by the state. Mr. McDaniel shared information related to the federal budget freeze. At this time, we will use carryover money to cover salaries. At this time, our biggest federal budgets, EC and Title I, have not been significantly impacted by the freeze. However, we do have multiple federal budgets that have been impacted. Dr. Jennifer Wampler shared a staffing update for the 2025-2026 school year. The committee discussed the update and the good progress being made in preparation for next school year. Dr. Wampler also shared the EC plan to use remaining PRC 118 money to provide a retention bonus of $525 in September 2025 to EC-related services providers in the area of OTPT school, psychologicalists, excuse me, psychologicalists and speech-language pathologists. This money expires in December 2025. Beginning this school year, as a recruitment and retention effort, EC will pay a $500 a month supplement to EC teachers and program facilitators who have their master's degree in one special education, two education, or three masters, coupled with completion of graduate-level special educational teacher licensure program. This supplement will be renewed on an annual basis depending on the availability of EC and Medicaid funds. Dr. Fisher provided a payroll update. The committee discussed payroll dates, especially related to classified staff. District staff will continue to work to ensure employees understand how they are paid. As Dr. Fisher also shared information related to the board member compensation, the committee discussed compensation related this, and requested this be discussed with the full board. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 30th, at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Next on the agenda is the Personnel Report. Mr. Spurling, I believe you have a family member on that, so you will need to recuse yourself. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Personnel Report.
Make a motion to adopt.
Mr. Bridges, make a motion. Second by Mr. Grigg. All in favor? That will be seven to zero. All right, Safety and Operations. Mr. Spurling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The July 14th Safety and Operations Committee meeting was called to order by Chairman Walter Spurling. Daniel Howell provided a safety update. This summer, Mr. Howell and Mr. Pless have been meeting with athletic departments of each secondary school to discuss safety, to discuss safety plans and procedures related to athletic events. Mr. Howell will be attending the State Safety Conference in Statesville in a few weeks. Mr. Howell will provide an SRO update as requested. Mr. Pless shared that he and Mr. Howell and the high school athletic directors and head football coaches had a great meeting with the GWU Gardner Web University in regards to the safety for upcoming football jamboree on August 8th, 2025. Mr. Pless and Mr. McClung also shared an update regarding DOT DMV physicals. DMV sent out a new memo to transportation directors that is more favorable for our bus drivers. Mr. McClung also shared that in a recent school, state school bus inspector competition, two of our mechanics placed in the top 12 in the state. Jason Woodring placed third in the state. I'd like to pause and just say, congratulations to him. That is an awesome accomplishment. This is a huge accomplishment and a testament to the excellence we have in Cleveland County schools. Mr. Pless shared that there has been no change related to teacher certifications, certification options for driver's education teachers. Ms. Hammerick updated the committee, excuse me, on positive enrollment processes. Ms. Hammerick and Mr. Borders will be talking with school administrators at the upcoming admin retreat about discipline data and processes for the new year. Ms. Hammerick shared that we submitted a school safety grant requesting $625,000. The items requested in the grant were based on needs assessment from local law enforcement and district safety walkthroughs. We will find out in September if we receive the grant. Ms. Hammerick also updated the committee on psychological safety efforts and progress. Mr. Lee with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department reported that he recently attended a national SRO safety training in Texas. Mr. Lee reported that he was very proud of the work we are doing. He felt that the work done in partnership by law enforcement and Cleveland County schools has been positive and ahead of the safety curve in comparison to other districts. Mr. Patterson shared that we have completed the door lock projects for this summer. The following agencies' reports were shared. Mr. Van Hoy from the City of Shelby Fire Marshal Department shared that inspections for Shelby schools will occur within the first 10 days of school, the school year as required. Probation Officer Carmen Clark shared that they will continue to visit schools every week this school year. This information is communicated and updated with Mr. Borders. Dr. Jennifer Wampler and Chip Childers shared the Capitol Projects report. The committee reviewed the report, which will be attached to the board's agenda at their July meeting as an information item. Mr. Childers and Daniel Sherman shared a project report update. It has been a busy but productive summer. Brian McClung shared a list of surplus vehicles and parts for approval. The parts are obsolete and are for disposal or sale. The committee unanimously approved the surplus list to go on the full, go on the full board for approval at their July meeting. Dr. Wampler reviewed the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club requests related to the press box and stadium renovations, which was presented to the committee by David Brinkley in June. The committee continued to be supportive of the project, which will be shared with the Finance and Personnel Committee and presented to the full board for approval in July. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Safety and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 28th, 2025, at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Spurling. Next on the agenda is the surplus items that was approved by committee, so it does not need a motion or a second. Any questions on that? No, this way, just read. Sorry about that. Any discussion on the surplus? All those in favor? That's eight to zero. All right. Next is Educational Programs and Policy Report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask one question.
Sure.
Mr. Spurling, on the safety grant that we are applying for, was it listed in any part of the safety projects that they're looking at?
Yes. In closed session in the Safety Committee, some of those were discussed. We don't put them on the minutes, but if you would like to get together, I or Ms. Hammerick will explain all of those to you.
All right. Rick?
Mr. Humphreys? Okay. Education Programs and Policy Committee met on July 15th at 11:30 a.m. We reviewed Policies 6430, Purchasing Requirements for Equipment Materials and Supplies. 6430 are the same. 6442, Vendor Relations. 6450, Purchase of Services. These policies were reviewed and discussed as part of the committee's ongoing review of the Board Policy Manual and are in the 6000 section, which is Support Services. No changes were recommended to these policies by the committee. Rob McDaniel shared new policy, 8240, Investments, which is legally required. Dr. Fisher and Leah Sink reviewed policy updates to 4312, Technology Responsible Use, based on recent legislative changes. Policy 4318, Use of Cell Phones and Wireless Communication Devices, also reviewed, but no changes were recommended at this time. The committee reviewed and supported these policies for consideration by the full board as a first read at the July meeting. Dr. Hunnell shared an instructional update related to strategic plan goals and progress related to ACT scores and end-of-year academic data. Dr. Parker and Dr. Hunnell shared a federal program presentation of our district's comprehensive plan specifically related to funding from Titles 1, 2, 3, 4, and McKinney-Vinte. The committee thoroughly discussed this plan and budget implications. The committee thoroughly discussed this plan and budget implications. The committee approved this report, and it will go to the full board tonight also. Dr. Fisher and Ms. Sink shared the Health Department contract. Ms. Sink discussed minor modifications to the contract primarily related to telemedicine and the new dental bus. The committee supported the contract, and it will go to the full board for approval tonight. Dr. Hunnell shared a robotics purchase order, which is below $75,000, but is a sole source request requiring board approval. The amount is $30,211.33 and covers the robotics cost of each school. Dr. Hunnell shared an EC speech contract not to exceed $84,200. He also shared two EC sole requests for ASPIRE, a reading program used in EC, in the amounts of $47,090.65 and $13,192.39. The committee unanimously approved all four of these purchases and contracts, which will go to the full board for approval after July meeting. Dr. Hunnell shared the 2526 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System Options. District staff recommended approval of Option B, which is participation in the modified system, and evaluated by various components, including student persistence, student achievement, and growth. This is the option we have selected in the past and again recommend. The committee discussed the options available and supported this option. This will go to the full board tonight also. Dr. Fisher shared four options related to communities and schools. We are recommending approval of Option 2, which includes adding James Love Elementary to our current programs at four sites for a cost of $201,000, or $201,053. While we are interested in other options, we feel this is the best option for us at this time in terms of funding in need. The committee supported this plan, and it will go to the full board tonight. Dr. Wampler and Stephanie Henson shared EC's plan to use remaining PRC 118 money to provide a retention bonus of $525 in September '25 to EC-related service providers in areas of OT, PT, school psychologist, and speech-language pathologist. This money expires in December of '25. Dr. Wampler and Ms. Henson also shared that beginning this school year as a recruitment and retention effort, EC will pay $500 a month supplement to EC teachers and program facilitators who have their master's degree in, one, special education, two, education, or a master's coupled with completion of a graduate-level special education teacher licensure program. This supplement will be renewed on an annual basis, depending on the availability of EC and Medicaid funds. Dr. Fisher shared that Todd Peeler, retired history teacher, is working on a history grant application for Cleveland County schools. This grant is specifically focused on civics and is an excellent opportunity for our students. If the grant is approved, then it will come to the board for approval. Dr. Fisher also shared a federal budget freeze update related to recent information. With no additional new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Education Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 29th at 11:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uffries. Next on the agenda is, one, two, three, four policies for first read only, no action required. I'll read those policy numbers. Policy 8240, Policy 3225, 4312, and 7320. And next on the agenda is a number of policies for approval. We'll take them all in one vote, but let me read them off to you. Policy 1710, 4020, 7230, 1725, 4035, 7236, Policy 2302, 2342, 3620, 4040, and 7310. All these do come from committee recommendations, recommended for approval. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I was asking this, Chairman, about this a few minutes ago. Maybe I shouldn't be asking you, maybe it should come from Dr. Fisher or from our attorney. At what point should human resources or personnel be involved in sexual harassment? When will they be involved?
Yeah, I think. As soon as the report is made, we have policies governing.
I'll let her answer.
In this policy, where are the human resources or personnel?
I'd like to review it with review at another time.
Which policies talking about? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? That's eight to zero. All right. Next on the agenda is more items that come from education and policy for approval. I'll read all these to you. The federal program presentation, 2025-2026, Health Department Contract, 2025-26, Robotics Sole Source Quote, Robotics Sole Source Letter, the Sole Source Spire 1 Quote, and Spire 2 Quote, Speech Contract, and the 2025-26 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System Option. All of those. I have here, let's just come on, Madam Attorney. Ms. Sherman had notified me prior to the meeting that she would need to recuse herself for the community and schools. I'm just going to pull that one and vote on the ones I just read off, and we'll do communities and school contracts separately. Okay, all right. Those I just read off, any questions?
Minus the communities.
Minus the communities and schools. Yep, all right, all in favor? That's eight, zero. Now, Ms. Sherman will recuse herself from the communities and school vote. So all those in favor of the communities and school contract, raise your hand. That's seven to zero, all right. Dr. Fisher, do you have an update?
It's only 6:40. I've got a lot of time to give you some updates in. That's why I brought my full notebook up here.
I'm sweaty, I am sweating, so.
I like the extra time to talk, you know, that's good. So, do you mind bringing my computer up here so I can get, no, just kidding. I better behave myself. You've got a couple of updates. You notice today's superintendent updates are a little different form. We've done this, trying to tweak in a few things. That way we can too publish some of these and make these a little more accessible for the public. Just to highlight a few things, you do have committee meetings. I know it seems like we're meeting this week, and why don't we get committee meetings the next week? July, the board meeting's a little odd. Instead of the second Monday, we meet the fourth Monday because of surrounding the fourth. So, so a quick turnaround for committee meetings, you can see those referenced. Fall sports season, it is that time of year, again, folks, it's the fall. I know it feels like it's, you know, 100 degrees out there, and it's almost. But, but fall sports season officially begins on Wednesday, July 30th. Back-to-school bash is Thursday, July 31st on our campus from 5:00 to 7:00. Would really encourage you to come out and see the back-to-school bash. It's a great opportunity for community parent involvement. We have really a lot of students and parents come out. Dr. Parker and his team did a really good job of putting that event on. You can either have a hot dog and all that kind of stuff. And if you would like to, we'll sign you up. We still have some space for the Dunkin' booth, so we'll sign you up for the Dunkin' booth if you'd like to participate in that as well. First day of school for Cleveland Innovation is Monday, August 4th. Teacher work dates begin Tuesday, August 5th for the rest of our teacher population. We do have convocation that day. We'll have four different convocations, one in each zone. The Sharonview Federal Credit Union Cleveland County School Football Jamboree, it's a long title, but that is at Gardner-Webb on Friday, August 8th. You heard that at one of our committee reports. You do have a board and education meeting. Your next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, August 11th. First day of school is Wednesday, the 13th, or just a little over three weeks is start of school. We're eagerly excited about that opportunity. And then that pushes us to board meetings to get to the end of August and prepping for September. So, I tried to give you a month and a half out in terms of schedules and timeframes. Lots of really good things going on. You know, with this week, although we're not back in school and teachers and 10-month employees aren't back to work, this is our leadership retreat week. So this almost begins like, you know, school's back in session. So invite you, again, invite you for our leadership retreat, come eat lunch with our, with our school and district administrators tomorrow. We'll spend two days really diving in and making sure everybody's on the same page and prepping for the upcoming school year, so we're excited about that. So, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the time to share a few of our comments.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. Next on the agenda is public participation. We have one, I believe it's Mr. Rob Powell. Before Mr. Powell, before you come, let Mr. Bridges read our rules for public participation, please. Thank you, sir.
All right. Public comment should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Specific concerns related to confidential student or personnel matters should be directed to the superintendent or designee. Comments must be relevant to the matters that are within the authority of the board. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks or threats directed towards staff, elected board members, or members of the public. Speakers shall be courteous in the language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behaviors are not allowed. The board vests in its chair or other presiding officers to terminate the remarks of any individual when he or she does not adhere to these rules established above. Any person who willingly interrupts or disrupts a board meeting may be directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer. Any person who refuses to leave may be prosecuted for disrupting a public meeting. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that the members of the Cleveland County Board of Education are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Immediate answers are not generally possible and must be deferred pending investigation and consideration by the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Okay, Mr. Powell?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rod Powell. I'm a retired teacher, a proud Cleveland County resident, and someone who spent more than 30 years working with young people in public schools. Now, let me start by saying, I'm not here as a Democrat tonight. I'm not here speaking for a party. I'm here as a teacher, a neighbor, and someone who cares deeply about what's happening in the lives of our students, especially ones, especially the ones that are starting to fall behind. Now, a close friend of mine recently pointed me to a book called "Boys and Men" by Richard Reeves. And I'll be honest with you, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but I've done some digging. I've read the research behind it, and I've listened to the conversations that it sparked. And folks, it hit a nerve. This book makes a powerful, simple point. Our boys are struggling in reading, in school engagement, in mental health. And it's not just happening somewhere else, it's happening right here in Cleveland County. Now, we see it in schools with the quiet kids who stop raising their hands, and the ones slipping through the cracks by middle school, and young men who can't see a path forward and simply check out. Now, this isn't about politics. It's not about boys versus girls. It's not about blame. It's about the hard truth that a lot of our boys are losing connection to school, to purpose, and sometimes to hope. So I want to ask, what are we doing in Cleveland County to meet them where they are? Are we looking at third-grade reading scores by gender? Are we expanding vocational and hands-on training and learning options for students who need more than a college prep track? Are we thinking about mentoring, mental health, and helping our boys stay connected? Now, I believe we can be a school district that leads, not with anger, not with fear, but with care, creativity, and courage. Let's listen to our teachers. Let's listen to our boys in our schools. And let's be that kind of district that listens, every child, even the ones who've gone quiet. Thank you all for your time, and I really appreciate what you all do for the schools here in Cleveland County.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Next on the agenda is board comments. Does anyone have any comments? Everybody hot?
I want to apologize for having to get up and take my phone out in the hallway. I was searching for some insurance today. So you know what happens, and I couldn't turn my phone off, and so I thought it'd be best to put it out in the hallway. So I apologize for interruptions. And I hope that everybody has a safe rest of the summer. But please, come back to Cleveland County schools. We need you. We need each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grigg, Ms. Sherman?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say, I'm just in awe of all the celebrations that we've looked at tonight. I mean, I know we read through these things really fast, but there are many, many names and faces behind those policies and awards that a lot of work, and I just appreciate the people in our school system and the hard work. And it is an honor to me every time that I, I get to see it and represent the employees and the teachers and the students of our school system. I also want to say that I miss the students being here. So I'm excited about schools starting back. I'm excited about the back-to-school bash. I attended last year, and I remember the music, so I hope we're going to have that loud music again. And it was a big celebration. I remember we had a big thunderstorm, but that didn't stop anything. So excited about the back-to-school bash and the students coming back and having some here in the board meetings. I'm also excited and want to express my congratulations to Crest High School and the Coach Jim Taylor Award. I was a student of Coach Taylor's, I think it was his first year teaching at Shelby High. So needless to say, I think I sat like on the second row, and I did not move because I was not going to disturb him. But he turned out to be one of the, is my, yes, one of the very best teachers that I ever had. Also, one of the best people that I have ever known. And to this day, have seen him do so much for so many people and to stay involved. So it's, it's great to have an award in his name, and I want to commend Crest, and thank you for that. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Anyone else?
I'd like to make some comments, please. So, so first of all, I want to point out that on Thursday, July 29th, at 10:00 a.m. in the Central Services Auditorium, Courtney Doster has invited people to attend their summer internship graduation. So this is where students in, in the school system, in high school, can go out and work in a business, get experience. If the business wants to hire them after, after high school, that's a plus. But this is one way that our kids in, in our school system get out of the classroom and get real-world experience. I'd also like to point out that that program has like doubled its participation in the regular school year in the last, I think they've been going for like three years. So it's doubled about every year and has grown larger and larger and larger. I'd also like to, like to point out that we have innovative and exceptional CTE programs, athletic programs. Just pointed out today that each high school average, what'd you say, 3.3? Everybody on athletic program, 3.3 grade point average athletics. And we have an exceptional, innovative, leading-the-way CCP program. No other, no other county in, in our state has the type of CCP program and partnership that we have with our local community college. We had 200, somewhere around 200 students.
We had 200, somewhere around 200 students graduate college with a certificate or associate's degree before they graduated from high school. So I would just like to point out, this community, this school system, this board supports our kids, and I am proud to say we give them multiple avenues to do all kinds, get all kinds of experiences and do all kinds of things before they even graduate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlin.
I'll speak, congratulations to Crest, that was a good job done on their behalf. Appreciate the parents coming out of what we've had. Talking about returning to school, I know the parents are tickled to death that school's going to start before too long. Now, teachers, I don't know about all of them. Some of them might, but some of them may be hesitant, Dr. Fisher, as far as putting up with the kids, I don't know. But it is, it's going to be good. I think we're off to a good year. I miss, or it's unusual for me to go around, as I ride by schools, I see school buses there. Instead of all going back to the garage, they do it differently now, don't they? So that's a change for me from what I'm used to, but I think we're going to have a good year this year. I think it's going to be something that we can look forward to. I look forward to these school visits again. I'm hooked up to where I won't be behind now whenever we are walking down the hallways. I've got me a little buggy behind my car that I'm going to be pushing, or having a wheelchair that I can roll on wheels instead of having to walk and slow down, so I'm looking forward to that. But I'm pleased that we've got them. I'm tickled with our training that we had last week. I think that was important, and look forward to the year coming.
Thank you, Mr. Leffler. No. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Spurlin, Bridges, all in favor, goodbye.